Okay, thank you for coming tonight. I am going to go ahead and open this Planning Board Public Hearing pursuant to MGL Chapter 40A, Section 5, where we will be reviewing the various articles, beginning with Articles 31 through 35.
Can you read it?
I think all the mics in the room are live, FYI. So we will be reviewing the proposed Articles 31 through 35 and a general bylaw amendment to the scenic roads bylaw proposed under Article 30 that are on the town meeting warrant. I'm going to start by doing a roll call of the Planning Board, even though we're here in person, we have a couple of members that I believe are remote, so we know all the members that are here. Let me start with, I think the remote people is Andrew. If you're here, if you could say, "Present."
Present.
Thank you. And Haley? Okay. Linda?
Here.
Nate? Here. Nate?
Present.
Kristen?
Present.
And I'm Burton Flint, the Chair. Okay. So just the procedure for tonight's public hearing is each presenter will present their presentation. The purpose of the public hearing is so people can ask questions for clarification on the presentation. Sometimes it can make helpful suggestions for how the information could be conveyed more clearly in the town meeting format, and generally asking questions about the presentation. In terms of, well, there will be no Planning Board deliberation tonight, and in terms of taking time to advocate for a position one way or another on the articles, we ask you save that for town meeting, which is the form for that. So with that said, we'll start with Article 30. If you want to come up and do an... Okay. Okay, I'll make a note that Haley's present as well.
Can you hear me? I do have a slideshow here, and they can get rid of the little, you know, meeting notice, please. Are they going to get rid of that white box? Oh.
And if you are on the Zoom meeting, and you could mute yourself until we have questions. Thank you.
Okay. So, good evening, everybody. I'm Melissa Saulfield. I'm the Chair of the Concord Historical Commission, and it is my privilege to present the Scenic Road Bylaw Warrant article, which is co-sponsored by the Concord Historical Commission and the Planning Board. So I'd like to go to the next slide, please. The establishment of a scenic road bylaw derives from state legislation first passed in 1973 to provide communities the means to protect their scenic roads. Since then, at least 113 towns, including all of Concord's neighbors except Maynard, have adopted a scenic roads bylaw. The bylaw states that either the Historical Commission, Planning Board, or Natural Resources Commission may recommend creation of the bylaw to be approved at town meeting by a majority vote. The bylaw also requires a listing of roads proposed for designation, and it establishes a schedule of fines if the bylaw is violated. The amount of the fines was also set with this legislation, and Concord cannot increase it. Some have challenged the inadequacy of the fine, suggesting that it is hardly a disincentive to violators, but it is applied daily and could add up to a substantial fee if the violation is not rectified. Next slide, please. Under Chapter 40, Section 15C, any repair, maintenance, reconstruction, or paving work on a designated scenic road that might require destruction or removal of a stone wall, or cutting or removal of a tree in the public road right-of-way must undergo a public hearing conducted by the Planning Board. If a tree is involved, the hearing would be combined with the current process, that is, the Tree Warden and Planning Board would jointly review the request. Next slide. There is a long history in Concord calling for greater protection of our roads. The 1987 land use plan stated that Concord's rural roads are important to the town's special historic character and recommended passage of a scenic roads bylaw. The 1995 and 2003 Historic Resources Master Plan, which documents Concord's historic resources, including views, sheds, and landscapes, again recommended the town consider adoption of a scenic roads bylaw. Next slide. The Long Range Plan of 2005 focused on scenic roads and called on the town to protect all Concord roads with a universally historic and environmentally sensitive policy. This plan also sought to protect and maintain the historic and cultural scenic vistas, including farmland, scenic roads, stone walls, major trees, and village centers. Next slide. Our most recent Long Range Plan, Envision Concord Bridge to 2030, listed several action items to be undertaken by the Historical Commission that affect scenic roads.
And what's your name?
Among these are... The promotion of this bylaw is a direct response to that recommendation. Additionally, the plan called for review and implementation of the 2007 Freedom's Way landscape recommendations, which noted four critical concerns, among which were scenic roads. And finally, the plan encouraged the review of the 1994 roads policy, which stated that, quote, "Concord seeks to maintain aspects of the existing environment which enhances its properties," end quote, "in considering the construction or reconstruction of roads." Next slide, please. Working with several Concord historians and researchers, we have built upon these efforts and developed criteria to determine what might constitute a scenic road and are proposing nine to be designated at the 2022 town meeting. These nine roads were selected as representative of the town's historic system of roadways and are only a start. In future years, should this bylaw pass, other roads may be nominated for inclusion and voted at town meeting. First, the criteria. The road appears on the 1852 HF Walling Town Authorized Map of Concord. The road exhibits overall scenic beauty and ample evidence of stone walls and canopy trees. There's clear proof of the road's age and historical significance of its trees and stone walls, and finally, the road includes features such as historic layout, historic sites, houses and monuments on its path. The roads, as you see on the slide, are Balls Hill, Barracks Mill, Garfield, Liberty Monument, Old Road, Janine Edgar Corner, Strawberry Hill, Strawberry Road, Westford Road. Extensive research on these roads is available on the Historical Commission's webpage, plus additional information, enabling legislation, and frequently asked questions. This research will continue to be refined and updated until town meeting. Anka Voss, Special Collections Curator of the Library, has been exceptionally helpful in supporting this research. We've been in discussions with her about the possibility of ultimately turning this research into a much larger project that would document the history of Concord's roads. Next slide. There are some very important caveats to the proposed bylaw. The bylaw is only triggered when a property owner proposes a repair or reconstruction within the public right-of-way. It might lead to the destruction or removal of a stone wall or portion of that wall or the cutting or removal of a tree. The public right-of-way includes the paved and unpaved portions of the town's right-of-way, and the public right-of-way for most roads could extend a few feet or several feet beyond the edge of the pavement. This is town land and subject to town control. For example, in one of the designated scenic roads, a developer might be building three homes and intend to break through the historic stone wall three times to create three separate driveways. If the bylaw were in place, this could trigger a public hearing. At the hearing, there would be public input to encourage consideration by the developer to make only one break in the stone wall and connect the three driveways from that point, thus preserving much of the stone wall. Another example, proposed construction of a sidewalk along one of the designated scenic roads that required removal of canopy trees. Such a scenario would automatically require a public hearing by the Tree Warden. Because this construction is along a designated scenic road, the public hearing would be a joint meeting of the Tree Warden and the Planning Board. Ideally, the ultimate design of the sidewalk would minimize the loss of canopy trees but create a safe sidewalk for pedestrians. Next slide, please. Again, this bylaw only applies to work within the public road right-of-way. Land beyond the public right-of-way is private and not subject to the bylaw. It's also important to note that language of the bylaw explicitly states that it does not apply to cutting or removal of trees by the town in connection with right-of-way maintenance, or to mitigate, eliminate, or avoid hazardous conditions as determined by the Tree Warden, nor does it interfere with the town marking the pavement or installing signage within the public road right-of-way. Annual roadside maintenance by Public Works and line clearing by CNLP would also be exempt. Next slide. The rules and regulations, procedures, and definitions that would govern the implementation of the bylaw will be developed after town meeting. Several criteria will guide their development. Overarching everything is public safety, in environmental values, historical values, preservation of natural resources, scenic and aesthetic characteristics, existence or absence of reasonable alternatives, consistency with articulated town policies such as the Envision Concord Long Range Plan. Next slide. Between now and town meeting, which, of course, we're hoping will approve the one article, town staff, principally the town planner and senior planner, will collect sample rules and regulations already developed by communities across the Commonwealth. They will meet with other town departments, residents, and other stakeholders to determine which best apply to Concord's specific character and needs and develop a draft set of rules and regulations. Next slide. If the article passes, the town clerk certifies the vote and submits the article to the Attorney General for final approval. This can take three to six months. During this time, staff will refine the rules and regulations that govern the implementation of the bylaw. These will be reviewed by Public Works, Historical Commission, Planning Board, and other stakeholders. Ultimately, the Planning Board will hold a public hearing to adopt the rules and regulations. And some final comments. We, the Historical Commission, are aware that Public Works policies incorporates the Complete Streets Program, designed to provide safe and accessible modes of transportation for people of all ages and abilities. These policies also declare that they help, quote, "maintain those aspects of the existing environment which will enhance the historic, scenic, and agricultural properties of roadway," end quote. In recognition of this, the policy notes that some elements of the Complete Streets Program may not always be feasible or practical and may be excluded. Among the exclusions are, quote, "sensitivity to narrow two-lane roads, stone walls, and legacy trees." These features help define the historic character of the town and may limit inclusion of certain complete street enhancements, end quote. This language goes on to say that the town continues to establish guidelines. In other words, our road policies evolve. They are not set in stone and may change or be variously interpreted. Our proposed bylaw provides important additional legal protection for specific historic roads. That additional protection is a public hearing attended by town residents whose financial support funds the care of our town's infrastructure and historic resources. I'd also like to comment on why. As anyone who lives in Concord can see, the town is undergoing considerable physical change. Ours is a very desirable community. Land and house values are soaring. There's enormous pressure to utilize all buildable lots and maximize those by building large, expensive homes that turn a profit for developers. We on the Historical Commission see this more and more as requests for demolition permits have increased. The Demolition Delay Bylaw was passed by town residents to help protect Concord's important historic properties. Yet even when we impose a delay, historic homes are still demolished, rendering the bylaw rather ineffective. As many of you know, the magnificent Harry Little-designed home on Lowell Road was demolished recently. Harry Little, renowned for his work on the National Cathedral in Washington, St. John the Divine in New York City, the Concord Library, and Middlesex Savings Bank here in town. We are a nationally, some say internationally, important historic town. We have responsibility for caring for that history, not to preserve it in aspic because change is inevitable, but to balance growth and change with active respect for the past. The Envision Concord Long Range Plan noted that while people here in Concord value our history and our historic resources, they do so passively. If we remain passive, we may lose what we treasure. So I encourage passage of this scenic roads bylaw as a reminder of what we still have that we can still preserve. So, questions?
Thank you very much, Melissa. And I think that the format we'll take here is Andrea Solomon from the Public Works Commission. I wanted to say a few things. And then if you can come back up, and we'll go to regular questions. Andrea, if you'd like. Yes, please.
So I'm Andrea Solomon. I'm on the Public Works Commission. And I just wanted to say, we absolutely agree that we don't want to see any stone walls taken down, but at all, if possible, and no trees taken down that don't absolutely need to be taken down. And because we think that, and because Public Works has thought that for a very long time, there's an excellent, very comprehensive roads policy that the Public Works follows, along with the public shade chief policy. And I'll just briefly fill in some of the history of that, very briefly. In 1994, the Selectment Roads Management Advisory Committee reviewed the need for scenic bylaw. They thought the bylaw did not go far enough. There was only one or two roads that they wanted to include on that, and the people at that time on that committee thought, there's not just a few special roads in Concord. All the roads in Concord are very special. So because of that, they thought Concord needed a much broader vision in order to protect all the roads in Concord. There's a very detailed outline of their recommendations that's dated November 30th, 1994, which provides a foundation for a thorough and transparent policy for all the roadwork done in Concord. That became the roads policy for the town, and I think we can put that up, the 1994 Roads Management Advisory Committee policy. We might be able to show that. So in 1999, based on those recommendations, the roads policy was implemented. The roads policy pretty much says everything that the current bylaw wants to achieve. It's achieved through that policy. In 2006, it was again reviewed, and a memo from the Director of Public Works at that time highlighted the Concord Roads Policy, which protects all the roads in Concord, also highlighted that public shade trees are very protected by state law and by town bylaw. Again, all Concord's roadways are protected via the contact-sensitive road design and maintenance practices of Concord Public Works. And then again, it was reviewed by the Public Works Commission that same year, 2006, and they noted that a drawback of this bylaw is its selectivity and lack of flexibility. It's very specific to certain roads. And again, they thought all the roads in Concord deserve that same outlook, that they should be preserved as much as they possibly can be. And in addition, there is a public participation process. Residents can share their views on the character and special assets of their road when it's being worked on. The roads policy allows Public Works to accommodate their views to the greatest extent consistent with public safety, and all the plans that Public Works has for our coming roadwork season are presented both to the Planning Board and to the public. So it has a lot of time and room for review and input from the public, and of course, we always welcome that participation.
Thank you very much, Andrea. Melissa, if you would like to come back up, and we can field if people have questions about the presentation. Thank you very much. Anybody in the audience has a question? Or I will also look to see if anybody raises hands online, which we'll take after that. Yes, please.
It's always so much fun doing first. Hey, we've got it. Okay. Carlin Reed, 83 Wet Sand. This is actually for Andrea. So Andrea, I'm confused now. Is the Public Works Commission in favor of this article or opposed to this article? Can you give me a clarification, please? Out of microphone, please. Thank you.
So we haven't discussed it as much as we'd like to, because we just found out about it fairly recently. We did not, we didn't vote on it. We discussed it, and you can watch those discussions. I think you can go to the Minuteman Network. Some of it is on YouTube. You can watch us discuss that. But we did not think that as a group, we didn't think we were in favor of it. I mean, again, we're in favor of not removing stone walls, of not removing trees, but what we came to the conclusion of reviewing all the historical paperwork that we could find is that these policies exist in Concord now, because we wanted such a, in the past too, we wanted such a comprehensive way of dealing with every street in Concord. We didn't want to designate special streets. When it first came up, I think it was 94 or 99, Virginia Road was the only road on the list that was going to be designated as a scenic road. And of course, now there's more that would be added. And even in the League Women Voters meeting the other day, people thought, well, why isn't my street on? Why isn't my street on? Well, they really are all on there. They're all considered special streets. Every street in Concord is considered special. I did want to say, though, that there is a gap with private developers. Private developers may have, there may be a bit of a gap in some of the rules about how they can make more than one cut to a stone wall to create a driveway. And I think that if we could come together as committees, as boards, as interested people in the town that want to close that loophole, we could do that. I don't know if this bylaw will do that, but I think it can be done if we work together and make rules that are very specific to that issue that we probably all want to solve.
Thank you. Metamoderator. Yeah, is this not on yet?
How's that?
Your honor.
Okay. Carmen Reese, 52 Devon Street, town moderator. I just have a couple of comments on the presentation. I noted that on Slide 4, the slide indicated a master plan of 2001, but the oral presentation indicated that it was 2003. So I just want to get an agreement there. And I also thought that it would be very useful to have a slide that set forth the criteria for selection of the proposed scenic byways. It was a nice, comprehensive summary of those, but it'd be a lot easier to be looking at them while they were sent. Thanks.
Thank you.
Matt Johnson, Selectsburg, 21 Winter Street, speaking on behalf. I guess, as I try to evaluate how I feel about this bylaw, I try to apply case examples. And so I look at the list of the roads that are on here, and then I think about roads that aren't on here, like Virginia Road especially, I guess, but also Lexington Road and Bedford Street. And, you know, especially that there is work being proposed by the state on Lexington Road or the extension to A that impacts its historical look and feel. I just wonder why they're not included in the designation? And what are the criteria? Just give me a, you know, walk me through kind of how you thought about, okay, Virginia Road's not on the list. Why not? And why is Westford Road on the list instead?
First of all, we looked at the whole, tried to come up with representative roads throughout the entire community. I mean, we thought about starting with just one road, and thought, that's not adequate. A simple answer for Lexington Road is that it is a state lumbered highway. No state, that's excluded in the legislation. So Lexington Road to A could not be included. But we, you know, we came up with these nine to start. We felt we needed to start somewhere. There's, you know, the criteria is what we established. Virginia Road, yes, does have some, obviously, the Thurl Farm is out there. It's an historic road, one of the earliest roads. We just thought we'd put a stake and start that with these nine. If these pass, we can possibly come before the town again to nominate additional. That's really as simple as that.
So it's just, again, I'm not getting a strong sense of, okay, you have this checklist, and Virginia Road did not pass, it didn't meet the criteria.
There's been a fair amount of work done on that, roadwork done on it. You know, our little committee of folks who came up with these suggested roads felt the nine we picked were the ones we felt present this year.
Okay, but I mean, so it just sounds like the Historical Commission likes these particular roads.
It wasn't just, there were other folks involved. Yeah, I mean...
I guess I'm just looking for some objective criteria, you know?
Well, I think it is, it is objective in the sense that they're old, they appeared on the 1852 Walling map, some are even older than that. They had stone walls, canopy trees, and they had historic monuments or homes along them.
Yeah, but it seems like it's necessary but not sufficient.
Maybe insufficient, but you know what? We could do, if these nine pass, we can add them in future years. We just felt we needed to start somewhere. I point out that our neighbor, Carlisle, adopted a scenic roads bylaw in 1973, the first year they could. Virtually every road in that town now is a scenic road.
And then a different question is about the Public Works being excluded, you know, from this process, and of course, they...
Well, no, they're not excluded from the process. What is excluded is that they have ongoing maintenance work that they have to do, that we understand that they have to do. That's what that was referring to, you know, line, clearing the maintenance that they do along the stone walls and the trees every year.
So they would still have to abide by...
Absolutely, yeah.
...in-town property?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for those questions. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
Oh, there's one online. I'm sorry. Hold tight. Nancy Frisella, Frisella Lee. I see your hand raised if you'd like to ask your question. Take yourself off mute.
Thank you. My name is Nancy Frisella Lee. I live at 140 Walden Street, and I don't have a question, but I have a comment. I'm one of the researchers on the scenic roads bylaw. I've been researching two of the roads on the list, and just to answer the last question, why aren't there more roads, or what, or, yeah, how do we decide? I'm not going to specifically enter that, but I just want to say that I'm still researching the two roads that are on, that I was assigned, and it takes a long time, and there's a lot of history there, and I've learned a lot, and it makes me realize how important this bylaw is. Just this week, I found out that, I'm always finding new things. In 1889, there was a special town meeting that was held to rename roads, including the roads on our list. And so what I want to say is that it takes time, we could have put more roads on the list, but it just takes a lot of time, and we've been really industrious doing this. And also, to speak to the point about the Public Works, they, this is not intended to supersede what they do. We fully respect what they do, but in other town reports that have been written, it always emphasizes that we need more rather than less collaborations with town committees. And this committee, the Historical Commission, is comprised of people who really care about the history, and not only care, but are knowledgeable. So many people care about it, but they're knowledgeable and are willing to put in the time to do the research. So when, and one of the speakers said that the public is always invited to give their input when there's any change. That's true, but there's always something that historians and people who have spent time researching can add and can strengthen the reasons for the importance of a road. So I just wanted to stress that, just for people to understand what's gone into this bylaw and why people are so keen on it. So anyway, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. And there is one more hand raised from another Nancy without a last name. So you have your hand raised. If you could take yourself off mute and identify yourself and your address, please.
Hello. I am Nancy Nelson, 1695 Lowell Road in Concord, and I am speaking only for myself tonight, but I would like to say that this bylaw reinforces collaboration among disparate committees within the town that have different areas of expertise.
Thank you.
And sometimes, oh, whoops, was I muted?
Nope, we can hear you just fine.
Okay, thank you. Okay, it changed. So I would like to say, I remember... So I would like to say, I remember the controversy about the changes in Virginia Road, when stone walls were moved to facilitate modernization or whatever it was at the time of Virginia Road. I think that changes in roads will often be focused on safety and efficiency and other engineering-related things. And, and it is a benefit to the planners of those changes to have input from historical people who have researched, as Nancy Frisella Lee said, extensively the importance of the roads and how they affect Concord. So I would just like to say that this bylaw just provides another opportunity for collaboration as Concord has endorsed through the Ambition Concord Plan and many, many other plans. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy Nelson. And at the microphone.
Thank you. Diane Proctor, 57 Sudbury Road. I've had the privilege of reading many of the histories that the Historic Commission has put together for these scenic bylaws, and it's fascinating. I mean, if nothing else, their work in that regard has been admirable and important for the town. And if their work continues and the scenic bylaw passes, then that means we'll be doing a lot of research on the history of this town and chronically making important ones. So I would urge us to think about that as we consider this bylaw. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Okay, now I think we don't have any further questions. Thank you very much for the presentation, Melissa.
Thank you.
And we can move to the next presentation, which is Article 31, and Kristin Ferguson will present.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here to talk about the additional dwelling unit and amendment to our existing bylaw. Next slide, please. What we're proposing is to allow any additional dwelling unit with a special permit issued prior to September 2020, when we had a recent change to the additional dwelling unit bylaw. We'd like to propose that any additional dwelling unit prior to that is exempt from certain requirements, A, B, G, and L, which we'll illustrate in this presentation, of this section of the bylaw, and be able to retain the use as an additional dwelling unit. Next slide. So a little bit of background, 2020 wasn't that long ago, so we'll, we'll kind of come back to that. But the original additional dwelling unit bylaw was from 1974, and it allowed these additional dwelling units by special permit only. And we had about 52 of them special permits issued up until 2020, when the Planning Board brought a, an amendment to town meeting to allow additional dwelling units by right. And what happened was the additional dwelling units with special permits that were issued prior to this amendment do not, some of them don't meet all of the criteria that we added as, as this amendment. And in particular, the special permit would expire if the home was sold. Next slide. So again, in 2020, when we got together and the Planning Board proposed an amendment to the additional dwelling unit, it was really in support of a couple of goals from the Long Range Plan. In particular, it was to encourage renovation of existing homes, to create these units within the existing structures, and allow a wider range of smaller and more affordable homes that would allow for downsizing, but also as income potential for people to be able to stay in their homes. And so it was, it was passed, and everybody was very pleased, and we've had some good success, you know, since this, and this was 2020. Next slide, please. What happened was, we, I think, hadn't thought about necessarily about the 50 or so special permits that had been issued to that point and the fact that they would expire. So basically, what we would be adding to the existing bylaw was this provision N that says any dwelling unit that's subject to the special permit recorded, you know, prior to September 2020 would be exempt from items A, B, G, and L in this list in the bylaw. And that pertains to the minimum lot area, the size limitation of the unit itself, setbacks, and the maximum floor area ratio. Next slide, please. So there's four specific criteria that some of the issues where an additional dwelling unit has received a special permit, they might meet it or they might not meet it. But in, in general, what the important part is, is we want to make sure that any additional dwelling unit that had a special permit prior to our change in the bylaw in 2020 is able to retain that special permit and, and doesn't have to give up the additional dwelling unit if the property is sold. And the reason why is because that special permit, when it was granted, whenever it was granted between 1974 and 2020, went through a pretty specific vetting process by the Zoning Board of Appeals to ensure that that additional dwelling unit was not substantially detrimental to the neighborhood. And so having been vetted, having been issued the special permit, we want to make sure that's able to stay with that home regardless of if it's sold. That's kind of the major issue that this amendment to the bylaw would be changing. Next slide, please. So again, to conclude, we, 2020, we made this great bylaw. We have had a number of additional dwelling units put in place since then, so we're clearly, you know, adding to our inventory of smaller and hopefully more affordable housing. But we want to make sure that any additional dwelling unit, whether it's by right or by special permit, can continue to operate regardless of change of property. And this, that's what this year's amendment, amendment would do. So if there are questions, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Matt Johnson, 21 Winter Street, speaking for myself again. So if we exclude those requirements, essentially grandfathering those permits, now what happens if they want to make their ADU a little bigger?
I would imagine that if there's an amendment to their special permit, that would.
So it's still controlled by the special permit process?
Yeah, I think what we're saying is that the special permit would not expire upon sale of the home.
Because ADUs now are right by right within a certain.
Up to a certain size, correct.
I'm just wondering, are they now subject to the new bylaw or the existing bylaw? I'm, I'm a little confused that if I, and again, I don't have one of these, but if, if I had one and I don't have the right setbacks or my lot's too small, what do I do now? If, if I wanted to maybe expand it a little bit? It was 600 square feet, I want to make it 750.
And, I mean, Elizabeth, do you want to field that?
Sure, Mr. Chairman, Elizabeth Hughes, Concord Town Planner. So the, what would happen at this point in time is the special permits that were issued for additional dwelling units prior to the amendment, if the property has been sold, that special permit expired. But that person may still want to have an additional dwelling unit for that area that's been set up, but it may be, you know, over 750 square feet, or it may be a little bit over 1,000 square feet, the requirements back then. So they would have to reapply for a new special permit. And if this provision is adopted, then those specific requirements would not apply. They could continue to have that additional dwelling unit in that configuration of that original special permit.
But could they, if they had even a 1,200-square-foot ADU based upon the original bylaw, assuming they had a huge house to start with, could they further expand beyond 1,200 square feet? Because.
No, it would be limited to what the special permit was when it was initially granted.
Okay, I just don't know how the bylaw amendment makes that clear. I guess that's, that's my question.
Okay, and, and I guess, that's a good question. And I'm hoping that the language that we have in there says that it's exempt from, it, it's going to retain its special permit, but doesn't say anything about alteration to the special permit. So I think that would be taken care of.
What I worry is that it says that these things don't longer apply, so now they can do what they want, you know? That's what I worry about.
Well, they still need, they would need to get an addition, a new special permit. So if the original special permit allowed for an 1,100-square-foot additional, an ADU, they go back to the Zoning Board of Appeals. While the Board of Appeals can issue that special permit based on the original one, it's still a discretionary permit. And, you know, it would be the Board of Appeals saying, well, the limit's 1,000. When you originally got your special permit, you went to 1,100. Some ADUs, you can't, you can't, you know, make it smaller or, you know, knock a portion of it down. So it's still a discretionary permit. So under that discretionary ability of the Board of Appeals, if somebody came in and said, I now want to make this 2,000 square feet, you know, it, it would be the Board of Appeals upholding this, you know, the intent of the, the current bylaw. And like, well, you can have what you had in, in your original special permit, that's what this amendment allows, but to go any greater, again, is there's a reason the, the 1,000 square feet was set. According to progress. And previously, special permits, notification to the butters, there's the public input, that would have to happen again, so.
Right, but so they can't just come and say, yeah, but this letter no longer applies to the current bylaw.
No, it is still, it is still a discretionary, correct. It's still a discretionary special permit. It's, it's not by right.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other questions for Kristin? See none online, Kristin? I think you're done. Thank you very much. Next article, Article 32. Linda, she will be presented by Linda Miller.
I'm Linda Miller, and presenting Article 32, which is a zoning bylaw amendment to add the Thoreau Depot Business District to the list of areas covered by the Formula Business bylaw. The Formula Business, if we could have the next slide, please. The Formula Business bylaw seeks to preserve the existing character and scale of our town business districts. These districts are a great asset to Concord and enhance our ability to attract residents and visitors. This warrant article will limit the number of formula businesses in the Thoreau Depot Business District to 14. For those of you new to the concept of formula business, it's defined as a business activity. Sorry, if we could have the next slide, please. It's defined as a business activity with a variety of standardized features as listed here that are present in 15 or more such establishments, regardless of ownership or Next slide, please. As background, Concord has more than a decade of experience in limiting formula businesses. In 2011, formula businesses were defined, limited to 10 in West Concord, and a special permit process was established for their review. Next slide, please. In 2019, Town Meeting extended formula businesses restrictions in the Concord Center area. Next slide. What is special about the Thoreau District and the Thoreau Depot Business District specifically? It's obviously special in many ways, many of which will be discussed in Article 33 as well. Obviously, it has a rail service. The Fitchburg Rail was supported in that area with small freight and a lumberyard, and it really reflects the Concord early industrial period. Next slide, please. Nowadays, nearby schools, playing fields, library, and arts buildings, the town forest in Walden Pond attract residents and many visitors to the depot area, and the area is bordered by retail and transit hubs. Next slide, please. Here is a map of the boundary of the depot district. And the next slide will indicate the list of current formula business, all of which will be preserved in the Thoreau Depot Business District bylaw. Why set a limit of 14 formula businesses, which would be highlighted in the next slide? Really, we are attempting to preserve the current mix of businesses, allow for their organic growth of those businesses, and allow for a couple of new businesses to enter the Thoreau Depot Business District. And I would be happy to answer questions and hear your comments.
Thank you very much, Linda. See no hands in the room? Let me check. And no hands raised in the Zoom meeting.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next presentation is on Article 33, and I'm doing that one. So I'm Burton Flint, Chair of the Planning Board. This is Article 33, which is the Planning Board's proposal to make zoning changes to the existing Thoreau Depot Business District and the zoning map for that district. And due to the length of the proposed changes, which you should review in the, in the, in the warrant, I'll not go through the article line by line, and instead I'll describe more generally the intent and effect of the changes, and then focus on a few of the specifics. I'm now up there. Do we want to go bring the slide presentation back up? So also note that the Planning Board's developed a lot of information. We have a special section on the Planning Board's website with a lot of the materials that you can review there in terms of the process that got us to this point. Next slide, please. So first, what is the Thoreau Depot Business District? This is an existing zoning overlay district that provides special zoning rules for the area around Sudbury Road and Thoreau Street. And essentially, it was the area that was historically defined by the trains, freight depot, and some of the surrounding businesses. This diagram shows that the district today, as it essentially appears, it's primarily comprised of commercial buildings surrounded by parking areas and a very small amount of green space, mostly parking lot islands. There's one small residential building over on the left-hand side that exists today that you can see some green around. Next slide, please. So Concord develops a long-range plan every 10 years through an extensive multi-year public engagement process. This slide shows some of the town goals identified in the current 2030 plan that are intended in part, excuse me, the Planning Board is tasked with approximately 55 action items that are intended in part to implement these goals. The 2030 plan, as well as Concord's 2015 Housing Production Plan, specifically directed the Planning Board to revise the Thoreau Depot zoning. Next slide, please. The 2030 plan identifies that Concord's population is changing. While the number of households in Concord has increased, household size has declined and it's continuing to do so. Essentially, there's more empty nesters. The over 65 population is increasing, while the number of kids is decreasing. And this has some significant implications for what our housing, transportation, and service needs will be in the future. Next slide, please. With these things in mind, the Planning Board got to work. In the process of turning the 2030 plan goals into a zoning article, article for consideration by Town Meeting, kicked off back in 2019 by holding a public forum where the Planning Board asked community what you want to see in the district. We gathered input on preferred examples of architectural styles, building masses, and property layouts, and what future needs are important to address. That input was distilled into a vision statement, followed by a set of more specific principles that the zoning should reflect, and finally, an initial zoning proposal that incorporates those principles. These materials are all available on the Planning Board website. They're pretty extensive. Over the following two years, through numerous Planning Board meetings and two more public forums, we developed and refined the proposal into Article 33. Next slide, please. In a nutshell, the Planning Board is proposing to revise the district zoning to help shape future development to make it more likely that when property is developed in the district, that mixed use with housing will be on the table. I want to take a moment to emphasize, there's no current development proposal to develop any property in the district this time. Article 33, rather, is intended to shape what may be proposed in the future, but again, there's no current development plan in the works. Let me go through each of these seven points, and, and some of these I'll drill down to and lay. Let me go through each of these seven points, and some of these I'll drill down to on later slides. So the first thing is prohibit some uses that are allowed today. There's a table of uses for each of the zoning districts, and we're removing some of the allowed uses that are permitted today. So no car dealerships, light industrial, additional gas stations, or professional offices on the first floor. That last one, in case sticks out, the idea is to create a more vibrant streetscape with stores, restaurants on the ground floor. Number two, lower the current height possible for pitched roofs, but allow for somewhat higher height via special permit process within a confined area of the largest parcels. And I'll, I'll address this one in more detail in a moment. Prohibit parking in front yard setbacks and require public space along front yards on Sudbury Road. The idea here is to create a consistent street wall, especially on a more intimate scale along Thoreau Street and on a wider, more boulevard scale along Sudbury Road. Number four, reduce the affordable housing requirements for smaller projects and specify affordability limits. This may seem counterintuitive as we're trying to encourage more affordable housing, but the fact of the matter is that the way the current affordable housing requirement exists today is that it jumps up from no requirements to developer needing, if you're building four or fewer units, to requiring building an entire unit if you build a fifth. And the fact of the matter is that no affordable housing is being built under this mechanism today in the Thoreau Depot. We also would propose, we're proposing to reduce the open space requirement for mixed use projects with the condition that it be functional and publicly accessible. This may also seem counterintuitive, but keep in mind that today, there's essentially no open space in, in the district, and it's fully developed. And the reason for that is that it's been developed as commercial almost entirely, and there's no requirement for open space for commercial projects. The requirement comes into play if you add residential, and the current requirement is, we believe, is too onerous to actually allow for the creation of additional open space. So we think by reducing it, we may actually cross the line where it gets created. Number six, reduce residential parking requirements for mixed use projects to align with the needs of one, two, and two-bedroom units near public transit. Today, we say if you have a unit of housing, you need two parking spaces. We're proposing that for one- and two-bedroom units, given that they're near a train station, could have one parking space. Three and above would have two. And seven, provide design standards so a new development better reflects the architectural styles and scale of Concord. Today, there's no design standards in the district. And in West Concord, where they now use design standards, it came out of a long planning process in West Concord, and that's had some good impacts on some of the projects that have been proposed in the last several, or few years. Next slide, please. Now to drill in on a few different things. First, the, what's preventing mixed use and how are we proposing to enable more of it? So the existing provision today in the zoning bylaw requires that all buildings on the lot must be mixed use. So if you've got a lot with two buildings on it and you want to put residential in it, they both need to be residential and commercial. What we're saying is that especially for some of the deep or large lots, that may not make sense, where you might want to have commercial out front where the street is, but you don't want, you might want residential on the back of the lot. So you would, we could allow mixed use by lot as opposed to by building. We are also clarifying what types of residential units could be allowed, so you could build multifamily housing, townhouses, single-family housing. Then with respect to the affordability requirement, the middle row there, for development, today it's for developments of four-plus units, 20% of the units must be affordable. We're proposing that for developments between five and 10 units, that affordability, 10% would need to be affordable. And defining that affordability, which is not defined today, as being affordable to somebody making 80% of the area median income, which gets, which qualifies that, would qualify that unit for the subsidized housing inventory that the town keeps for 40B purposes. And if you're greater than 10 units, you'd be at 20%, you'd be back up to that 20% level. And splitting between units, that 50% would need to be at 80% AMI, and the other 50% would be between 100 and 120% AMI. On open space, today, you need to have two times the gross floor area of the residential portion. So if you were putting, for example, four apartments over some shops, and they were each 1,000 square feet, that's 4,000 square feet of gross floor area, so you need 8,000 square feet of, of open space. Once you take into account the footprint of the building itself and parking requirements, you see why you quickly, why there isn't any mixed use being built in the district today. So what we're proposing instead is that for open space, 15% of the lot area would be required for open space if you add residential to a project. We're also putting in place design standards and requirements about where that open space should be. We want to get away from the open space being parking lot medians and more to plazas in front of buildings or, or park space. There's also some flexibility that's allowed through a special permit process to allow reduction of open space on a particular parcel if it improved open space on other nearby parcels. Next slide, please. Okay. For the dimensional requirements, today, the only dimensional requirements in the, in the district are, in terms of where the building is located on the parcel, is there's a 10-foot rear lot setback and a 10-foot side lot setback. What we're proposing here is that along the primary street, and the primary street's defined in the zoning bylaw as Sudbury Road, the building would need to be set back, the front, it would have a front setback of 12 feet from the sidewalk, but no more than 20 feet. And, and on Thoreau Street, it would, it would need to be between 0 feet and 12 feet from the sidewalk. So the idea is you're bringing the buildings up to the road, but on Sudbury Road, you're allowing some, some public open space along the road. For the side, and there's a little bit of an error in the wording on this, on this slide, but for the side, it's 10, it has a setback of 10 feet, or if it's adjoining a building with a common shared wall, it could be 0 feet. And then for the rear setback, it's keeping that at 10 feet, but specifying that if it's abutting a residential district, five feet of it must be landscaped. Next slide, please. Now with respect to building dimensions in open space, this is the table from the bylaw. There's a lot in here that doesn't make sense without the rest of the bylaw open in front of you, but I want to focus on building height. So today, it's 35 feet, but you can go to 40 feet by special permit, and the 35, that height is measured in two ways. For a flat roof, it's pretty simple. It's the highest point of the flat roof. For a pitched roof, it's the midpoint of the, of the sloped roof portion, which means that, that depending on how big that roof is, that's actually a variable number. And you, so it's a calculation that's essentially figured out by the, by the building inspector, and you can get significantly higher than 35 feet with a pitched roof today. And, and that also, that same calculation is for what you could get under a special permit at 40 feet. What we're proposing instead is 35 feet for a flat roof and 38 feet as a fixed number at the ridgeline of a pitched roof. And I'll go to the next slide to describe the circumstances under which you could get a special permit to go higher than that. So you could, thank you. So there are some additional requirements to get that special permit to get increased height. And I want to focus on this because there were, a lot of people had concerns through the, the public planning process that we undertook about height. So you could get to 40 feet for a flat roof, 45 feet for a pitched roof here, but the building itself to get, needs to be at least 125 feet from a residential district. It needs to be screened from the public right away by another building that's at least 34 feet tall, so essentially, you would not be visible behind that three-story building up front. And it's what this meet, and it's got to be, the highest point of the, the building needs to be 100 feet from the lot line. So what that effectively means is you could build, you could get a special permit really on, on one parcel in the district, which is where the, where the Crosby's building is today, as, based upon the lot, where the lot lines are today. Next slide, please. Another issue that was brought up with concern, with some concern was parking. First of all, it's important to know that we are trying to get away from the idea of the parking out front, sort of the strip mall look, and so it prescribed that the parking should be in the rear of the building. If not, that's not feasible. It can be on the side of the building, but it can never be in the front yard setback. So again, this is about creating a street wall, a vibrant street wall. And the, the parking requirements, as they are today, is based upon the number of units for residential and square footage for commercial, based upon the type of use in commercial, they have different parking requirements. But we're proposing to change that to just have, with respect to the residential component, that you'd have one parking space, as I said, for, for each unit up to two bedrooms, and two for, for three or more. There could also be potential reductions to provide some flexibility by special permit, and those, that would be for things such as, let's say you had a commercial building that had a bank in it and a restaurant in it, and the customers for the bank are there during the day, and the customers for the restaurant are there at night. So it doesn't make sense necessarily to have sufficient parking spaces for both uses simultaneously all day long. Another thing to note is commuter parking at Crosby's. There's currently a number of commuter parking spaces that are in the Crosby's lot, and those are provided under a lease agreement signed by the town that was, that was completed when that lot was developed. And this, this zoning proposal does not directly impact that lease agreement. It is possible that in the future, if that property was redeveloped where those parking spaces are located, maybe part of that development, the town at that time would work with a new owner to obtain an agreement to continue to provide sufficient commuter parking. Next slide, please. This is a hypothetical build-out, and it's important, I didn't mention earlier, the Planning Board was aided through this process by a consultant from the, from the, from the MAPC who, who helped us with, with these designs and helped us with the visioning process. This is not a specific proposal. Again, this is just essentially massing diagram or, you know, just a, an architectural markup, mock-up, excuse me. But we wanted to show what could be built hypothetically on the largest parcel, the Crosby's parcel. So here you have Building One, it's got some commercial on the ground floor, seven units above, it's got another 6,000 square feet of commercial on the ground floor, and Building Two with 10 units above, and Building Three, which is a large building in the lower left-hand corner, it's essentially the footprint of the Crosby's building. That, that, that commercial space, 31,600 feet, is just about what Crosby's and, and the Ace Hardware are today. And then above it, if this would be built under that special permit to go higher, you have three stories of apartments around a courtyard at the apartment levels that bring in additional 46 units. This, based upon this consultant's calculations, would be feasible while still allowing for a creation of 15% of the parcel as open space and requisite parking. Next slide, please. So traffic, thinking about that hypothetical example, there's, looks like there'd be a lot of new buildings on, on the parcel, wouldn't that significantly increase the traffic? And the Planning Board, we get traffic studies when we do site plan reviews frequently, and, and one of the things that the, the traffic engineers look at is the, the ITE, which is this sort of engineering guide that says, you know, how much a particular use creates in terms of additional traffic. And according to that, the Crosby's marketplace today generates an estimated 1,500 trips per day. Now, that's just the formula. I have no idea whether that's anywhere close to true, but that's what the formula would tell you. Adding 60 residential units approximately, which was what that hypothetical build-out had, I think it was 62 or 63, according to the ITE, would add another 200 trips in total. So it's not a, it's not a, an order of magnitude larger, it's, it's about 13, 14% more, more vehicle trips spread throughout the day. Next slide, please. Okay. Another big element is that we're incorporating by reference design guidelines. These are, you know, just, just pictures of buildings that could be built today because there's no design guidelines at all for, for the district. We could go to the next slide. What we're going for with the design guidelines is, first of all, sort of the smaller-scale facades, pitched roofs, dormer windows, glazing on the ground floor, I'd say, sort of call it a general New England vernacular. What's displayed on this slide is what would be on Sudbury Road, where you have a, a front yard setback, and in that front yard, instead of parking, you have some public open space. You have the buildings aligned along the road, and you have that, the massing of the building broken up, so it looks somewhat like buildings that were built serially over time. Next slide, please. This shows how today, those, the two buildings in the lower image that are in yellow look like monopoly houses, those are the existing buildings today. They're not aligned with, with the street, and so they don't really form a street wall. You see the dotted line would be where the design guidelines would say the, the building should be coming out to meet the street. And it's, and it's that same style of building, which was the preference that people expressed at our public forum. Next slide, please. For larger buildings, the buildings could be up to 100 feet long in the district, but for, for buildings over 60 feet in length, there would be a requirement that the, that facade be broken up in terms of the vertical modulation, so it, again, appears like it's, it's more than one building, just to give that smaller sense of scale that's present in the district today. And also, as I mentioned, there, there's a requirement for glazing, a percentage of glazing on the ground floors, so that you have, you have shops and other businesses, restaurants, that are open and inviting out onto the street. Next slide. The final element of, of the proposal is a district boundary change. If you can see where Grant Street intersects with Sudbury Road and that black line that is, is, runs down the middle of Grant Street, that is the existing boundary today, and you can see it heads back to the Crosby's. But that, it turns out that where the, a significant portion of the Crosby's parking lot is today is actually not part of the Thoreau Depot Business District, it's part of Residence B. So if you go to the next slide, you'll see what that, this change would do. It would align the, the boundary of the district with the existing parcels that are under commercial use today. And the reason for that is so that all the, the changes that I just went through would be, would apply to all the property that's, that's currently under commercial use today. That's the extent of the, of the article, and I welcome any questions.
And now it's on. Great. Just needs to warm up a bit. Pardon my ignorance, but I'm learning about open space, and there are two articles being considered tonight that deal with open space. And my question focuses on whether or not the two articles have any relationship to each other. I'm talking about your article, which talks about a 15% open space, Article 33, and then later tonight, we're going to be looking at Article 35, which also talks about open space for PRDs, Planned Residential Development Units, of 75%. Are those two articles related, and will Article 35 impact Article 33 if both are passed? Thank you.
Great question. They're not related. So the PRD is a separate planning process that, for, where you are essentially, you, you're able to, to get around certain minimum lot size requirements and things like that to create clustered developments, where you might have houses that are more close together by, but you're preserving more open space in, in a separate section of a parcel. Those rules would not be, would not apply when you're developing lots in the Thoreau Depot Business District under any circumstances I can think of, Elizabeth, unless, yeah, okay. There you go.
Okay, all right. Bill Kaiser, 8 Middle Street. This is a very ambitious project. It's going to entail, I believe, the, the development of 97 new housing units in the area, not just 60. And with that, I believe there will be a number of significant side effects, but I'm not sure the proposal has to be looked at. And my main concern is that putting all this into the space between Sudbury Road and, I believe, not all the way to Main Street, is going to create traffic and congestion. Now, I'm just wondering if the commission, or not the commission, if the town board has considered some of these side effects, like the congestion at a, what has been called a dangerous and challenging intersection of Sudbury Road and Thoreau Street. Sudbury Road is already a mess now at certain times of days, and I think with 97 additional units and more people, I'm just wondering if the board has considered any a priori measures to address side effects like this, rather than waiting afterwards to try and scramble and fix them?
It's a great question. Yeah, and we've given a great deal of consideration to those issues. I just want to clarify a couple of points and maybe there'd be changes I should be making to the presentation. There's not 97 units proposed. The number 97 came as a hypothetical maximum build-out, right? There, again, there are no particular proposals being, actual projects being proposed. What could actually built, be built would depend on any particular development, and some of these parcels are small, some are big, on the number of stories they could, they could go to, the amount of parking that would be required for a given use. the amount of parking that would be required for a given use, required open space, required setbacks, land use mix, commercial versus residential, structured versus surface parking. All of those things could vary tremendously at full build out. Let's say in 50 years from today, when all of the buildings have reached the end, that exist today have reached the end of their useful life and they've all been turned over and redeveloped in some way. 50 years, maybe it's 200 years. At full build out, maybe you could get to 97. I think if we started seeing any numbers like that, that would be quite remarkable. I think a lot of the buildings are likely not going to turn over. You know, for example, the Thoreau Depot building is not likely to be redeveloped anytime very soon. So I just want to make sure that that's clear. With respect to the actual traffic. So whenever there's a site plan review for an actual project, when somebody comes forward, there is a traffic study that's generally required. And we would be looking at the traffic effects there. I gave that general statement around the hypothetical example of it increasing roughly 14% for that project, which was pretty much if you maximized everything you could do on that lot. That same calculation would be made for each project as it came forward and moved along through the planning process. So that's how that would be addressed. Thank you for the question.
Burton, just so you know, there's two people online as well.
After Matt, maybe you can call on them. That would be great, thanks.
Okay, Matt Johnson, 21 Winter Street. Maybe we're slow for speaking for myself. So when we consider this zoning, how does the context of the MBTA Communities zoning requirements that, you know, the Commonwealth has put forward fall into this? It seems like the zoning isn't actually aggressive enough to meet those requirements that, first of all, multi-unit housing would have to be by right. This is by special permit. I don't know the scale of this district, but
It's not big enough.
It's not big enough. It's not 50 acres. So why are we putting forward something that, you know, won't meet the requirements of the MBTA community zoning when it is right there next to a commuter rail station?
It's a great question, Matt. And that act has come up. Since it was passed, I would note that act came into, was proposed and came into being after we started this planning process. And I think that the, sort of the general answer is, what we were doing is doing planning that's responsive to the Concord's own long range plan and the work that's been done in Concord in terms of what's right for Concord. Now, the question might be then, well, okay, so you've done planning that was organically done in Concord, but what about the MBTA Communities Act? You're going to have those requirements coming. Why don't you kill two birds with one stone? And I think the answer to that is, I am skeptical whether Concord would ever have the appetite for meeting the requirements of the MBTA Communities Act. Multi-family housing by right in a 50 acre area around the train station. It may not be that we ever get there, especially given that the penalties for not meeting the requirements of the MBTA Communities Act are the withdrawal of access to certain funds that Concord hasn't historically tried to get access to, is my understanding. There's also still a lot of questions about what the MBTA Communities Act, what meeting those requirements will really look like at the zoning level. There's been some general guidance that started coming out, but there's not a ton to go on. But again, the short answer is we've developed this over time in response to the Concord's long range plan and in response to the Housing Production Plan. And we think this is the right plan on the scale, developed organically within Concord. The MBTA's Community Act may drive further changes down the road, but that did not drive our decision making here.
Thank you.
Nathan, did you want to call on the online people?
Do you want to do one of the online ones?
Diane, if you can hold one second. Why don't you go ahead, Diane? You're up already.
Okay, Diane Proctor, 57 Sudbury Road. Thank you for this presentation. I know this has been complicated. And I know you're looking to the future, to try to set guidelines for the future. But in part, I feel like, you know, it's the kind of, build it and they will come. You know, the very presentation of all this is a seductive suggestion that what we really want is development in that area. And I wonder whether in fact what we're doing is almost guaranteeing that that will happen. The image that you just so beautifully presented, Burton, which is that in some part, and sometimes, this could be 50 to 100 years down the road before anything is done. I think the very opportunity that this presents invites a kind of development that may not have been considered before. So it seems to me, not disingenuous in any way, but at all. So I'm not accusing anyone on the thoughtful planning board of that. But I do think that we need to gird our loins and to understand that what this does, I think, is virtually guarantee that there will be development in that area. Could you respond to that?
Absolutely, yeah. And I don't know if I'd go so far as to say it would guarantee development, but it is certainly, right. But it is, I want to be clear, speaking as the chair, it is, would be, we would consider it a success if sooner rather than later, you started to see mixed use development in the district. Now, it's all dependent on private actors making decisions to redevelop their property serially over time, right? And then people may look at this and say, you didn't hit the mix right. It's 15% open space is still too much. That, those affordable housing requirements is still too much. It does not pencil out in my, you know, in the numbers. And I'm going to stick with my, you know, my existing business or just go all commercial. Or when the property flips, I'm just going to, you know, keep it commercial and no residential. I want to emphasize that part of this is what works in terms of the design and the look and the feel of the Thoreau Depot. And part of it is responding to a need that's been identified in the long range plan, that more, a better mix of housing types and affordability is required in Concord. We've heard a lot, especially from senior citizens, that there are not opportunities to buy, to downsize in Concord. They have large homes, their families have moved on. Now they've just got a large tax bill and a lot of places to dust. They want to get into a smaller, you know. And so absolutely, if change came somewhat sooner as a result of this, I would view that as a success if it was mixed use. Thank you. Yes, yeah. So Mary Hartman, I see you online there. You had your hand up for a little while.
Thank you. My name is Mary Hartman. I live at 16 Concord Green. I'm a member of the Finance Committee, but I'm speaking for myself. I lowered my hand because Matt Johnson asked my question and Burton, you answered it very well. But I wanted to make a follow on comment. And I think you said that if we, the town of Concord doesn't really get many funds from complying with any of these requirements that might come down from the state because we're a municipality with an MBTA train station. And you're right, we might not be penalized with money. But I do think that it's incumbent upon us because we do have, in fact, two train stations, to try to comply with the spirit of those guidelines. That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Is there another person on? Frank Feely?
Yes, Frank Feely, 347 Lexington Road, President of the Concord Housing Foundation, speaking on my own behalf. Thank you. There's an awful lot of effort that's going into this. And I know there's a lot of opposition. And the one suggestion I would have is to make it even clearer, and you've done some of this tonight, what could happen with the existing regulations as well as what is encouraged by the new ones? Maybe you'll even need a couple of hypothetical projects that would show, you know, what would happen, probably particularly at Crosby's, if somebody decided to redevelop that space under the existing regulations versus what you're proposing. Because I think, I think people may misunderstand that it's Crosby's versus some very dense housing. And that may not be the case. So I'm just advocating for maybe a couple of examples with and without these changes of what redevelopment might look like. You've done that very nicely with some of the design drawings. I'd love to see it in sort of the overall use pattern as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that suggestion, Mr. Feely. It's a good one.
We've got one extra join.
Let me go to this, let me go to those microphones.
Oh, we have one in the room, yep.
Hi, Dee Ortner, 169 Thoreau Street. And Burton, I have a question or a comment to follow up on Frank Feely's remark, which is, perhaps you could have a display of what could happen on Thoreau Street itself? Because my understanding is the zoning is for the entire district and not just the Crosby area.
So you mean what could happen on Thoreau Street under the proposal?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, we've got some schematics of that. I think I'm going to be running into about a either five or eight minute timeline. I'd leave it to our town moderator to decide. So it's a lot of information to pack into a presentation, but I could add in a Thoreau, a picture of Thoreau, I think, yeah.
Or you could have a handout for town meeting that might have some examples. If you're running out of time, Burton.
Got it. Thank you very much. Yes?
Carmen Reese, 52 Devon Street, Town Moderator. We'll talk about the time limits. I understand that this is a very dense topic and that there is a very high level of community interest in this proposal. One thing that often is very helpful is to have some slides in your back pocket for responding to questions. So that if they aren't in your main presentation, but you're anticipating you may get certain questions, have those in reserve and it will be easy enough to pop those up. One thing I want to note for folks is that given the amendments to Chapter 40A of the General Laws last year, this article will require a majority vote for passage and not a two thirds vote.
Steve Newmeyer, 61 Bonap Street. What she just said just kind of shocked me because prior, at the last meeting, it seemed like it was agreed it was a two thirds vote. Has something changed from before?
I think I previously said that I would not be seeking that it would be on a majority vote, but that's a decision of the town moderator. That's the first I've heard of from hers.
So you're saying it's because of the new state law that allows that? Even though we don't comply with the new state law?
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Yes, please.
Yes, the, this is not my decision. It is a decision under state law. So Chapter 40A changed the quantum of vote necessary for certain types of zoning proposals. And one of the types of zoning proposals that now requires only a majority vote is any multiple unit housing that would be available as a right or by special permit. And I've already checked this with town council to determine whether my reading of the statute was correct. And town council confirms that that is correct. It will require a majority vote for passage. But it has nothing to do with us. It has to do with state law.
Thank you, Carmen.
All right, we'll research that. Thank you.
Okay, one more online?
Pamela Drit.
Pamela, you can unmute yourself.
I am muting myself, okay. Pamela Drit, 13 Concord Green. I'm encouraged that this very complex subject is being addressed. And I thank you all for all of your hard work and consideration. And I am dismayed and discouraged and horrified that there is nothing in any of it that encourages green development, all electric. There are all kinds of opportunities to put carrots to allow the kind of development that we absolutely need. And it's not okay to leave that out. Height requirements could be something that's done.
Thank you, Pamela. And I know you've made these points a number of times and you know that we considered this, some of those elements. And ultimately, the decision was made to address that through other mechanisms such as site plan review and the like, and not to make the changes here. But I welcome you to make that point, which I think a lot of people will be interested in at town meeting. But thank you. Any other comments online? Okay. No more questions in the room? Great. Then I think we are moving to Article 34. So Ronald Lamott, if you would like to come up and make, for your presentation?
I'm here via Zoom. And it says I cannot start my video because the host has stopped it. So if someone could put on my video, that would be great. Thank you. So my name is Ron Lamott and I am the citizen petitioner putting forth Article 34, Zoning Map Amendment, Residence A and Industrial Park B zoning district. Next slide, please. The proposed changes to amend the zoning map by expanding the Residence A zoning district boundary and reducing the industrial park B zoning district boundary. Important to note that my wife and I are the owners of both parcels in question, 477 Virginia Road and the abutting parcel 50A Virginia Road. Next slide, please. As you can see here on this map outlined in red, that is the 477 property. And as you can see, the zoning boundary bisects that property. And so the westerly portion of my lawn is zoned residential. And the easterly portion where the house is, where the residence is, is zoned industrial. And so what we are proposing is to change that boundary. Next slide, please. And that would then put all of 477 Virginia Road into Residence A as well as a substantial portion of the abutting property 50A Virginia Road. Next slide, please. It's also notable that the entire property at 477 Virginia Road as well as portions of the 50A abutting property, 50A Virginia Road are in conservation restriction. Next slide. So the reason for this proposed amendment to the map is again that the residence is located in the industrial park B zoning district and residential is not allowed as a principal use in that district. So the existing residence is legally non-conforming. Moreover, any alteration or additional residential structures and uses require special permit and site plan review. Next slide. And so the proposed map amendment places, again, all of 477 Virginia Road in Residence A zoning district. And so it becomes conforming with the other half of the property and with its use and its use for over 300 years as a residence. In addition, currently accessory residential structures and uses are not permitted in the existing Residence A at 477 Virginia Road due to existing conservation restrictions. And the map amendment places, thus places a portion of 50A Virginia Road in Residence A, which allows other accessory residential structures and uses by right. And so that's, next slide. Any questions and/or comments?
Ron, I will let you know if there's a question in the room, which there is.
Thank you.
Hi, Carlin Reed, 83 Wits End. You have mentioned this concerns a conservation restriction easement. I understand. It was, this was recently discussed at a meeting of the Conservation Restriction Stewardship Subcommittee. And a question came up about whether the conservation restriction of this property would be affected by this article. And I don't think the answer was resolved. Is this an attempt to get around the conservation restriction using town meeting?
Not at all, no. It's, the conservation restrictions will remain in place and in effect as they have been. So that it doesn't affect either Conservation Restriction 83 or Conservation Restriction 84.
Sue Felsham, 19 Sunnyside Lane. This doesn't qualify as spot zoning, does it?
I'll let Elizabeth answer that question. I don't know if there's something, a strict definition of.
Mr. Chairman, Elizabeth, Town Planner. It is not spot zoning. It's an adjustment of an existing zoning boundary. With the districts right next to each other, it's a shifting of the zoning boundary. Spot zoning would be if the petitioner wanted to take 477 and rezone it to commercial, you know, limited business nine. That would be considered spot zoning when you have a specific site that is not in a zone district contiguous with those other districts. And it's a single, a single property.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Ron, those are all the hands I see up in the room here, and there's none online that I'm seeing. So thank you for that presentation.
Thank you very much.
Okay, that brings us to Article 35, another citizen petition, zoning map amendment, excuse me, the zoning bylaw, Section 10 PRD update. So I'll turn this over to Karen Jordan.
Hi, I'm here online.
You've got the floor, Karen.
Thank you. So this is a proposal I'm bringing forth on behalf of a group of citizens, very specifically focused on a narrow change to the PRD bylaw. Next slide. So specifically, we're looking to determine whether the town will amend the zoning bylaw Section 10.2.9 to increase the minimum amount of upland common open space from 50% to 75%. Next slide. So the town, as I think pretty much everyone in the room is aware, has bylaws to help preserve open space. Conquer conservation land and open space contribute significantly to Concord's unique character. And there are important bylaws that help the town preserve natural resources and open space. We have a wetlands bylaw that protects numerous water resources. That's river frontage, wetlands, streams, vernal pools, et cetera. And we also have a PRD bylaw which helps preserve open space. Next slide. So the two bylaws I just mentioned are somewhat in conflict. The PRD bylaw offers the opportunity to build higher density housing in exchange for the preservation of open space. Currently, 50% of that open space can be wetlands. But as we just touched on, wetlands are already protected from development. So allowing that much land to be included in the, wetlands to be included in the open space requirement for a PRD effectively reduces the amount of land that would be preserved in an open, in a PRD as open space. Next slide. So what we're proposing is a solution to this. Reduce the amount of protected land that can be included in open space. Reduce it so that that calculation, it can only be 25%. So the wetlands goes from 50% down to 25%. And that, we think that reducing this amount is a more fair exchange for the increased housing density bonus that developers have with the PRD proposal for residential development. And we do think that increasing the amount of land that is protected, that is the uplands land, is better aligned with the town's preservation goals. And when I presented this to the legal women vote, is they suggested some diagrams that could help explain to this change. So here, this represents a standard subdivision development. You would have houses that would be a great distance apart. And the green area on the right side represents potential wetlands that would be on the parcel of land. Next slide. If you were to develop a PRD instead, you would have greater density housing, as I mentioned. And on the right-hand side, you still have the wetlands, but you also have the open space requirement of a PRD. And that's in the purple. So the purple area overlaps with the wetland area, because the bylaw today allows 50% of that open space to be wetlands. So again, on the right-hand side, you have the open space overlapping with the wetlands. 50% of that open space requirement is satisfied by that wetland. And that is what area that could not have been developed anyway. So what we're proposing is a minor change, and we see that on the next slide. And in this case, the open space is only 25% of the wetlands can satisfy the open space requirement. So the net result here is there is really more open space and undeveloped land than in the previous proposal. But we think that this is better aligned with the town's goals of preserving open space. And next slide. So again, this would be the updated bylaw, and the change is very specifically to increase the amount of upland open space to 75%. So the bylaw would read that at least 75% of the area of common open space shall be upland. And that's it. Any questions?
We've got one in the room.
Sue Felsham, 19 Sunnyside Lane. I have three comments for your presentation. I'll go in reverse order, because that way I'll remember better. On your last slide, you showed how it would change the requirement to 75% of the open space, and you highlighted 75% by putting it in red. But it's in dark red on dark blue, and very hard for my old eyes to see. So I hope you will change the color. Second comment, in your very helpful diagrams, I don't, it didn't look to me like you had the proportions right. You showed the plain purple, which was the uplands, excuse me, the required open space, and you showed the wetland portion, which was hatched in green, and where they overlapped, it was hatched but purple. It didn't look, it looked like it started out with the required open space being less than 50%, excuse me, upland open space, in the preceding slide, I believe. This one. That looks to me like an equal-sized purple band, an equal-sized purple hatch band, and a narrow band of green. And I don't think that's what you meant, but I will let you check up on that later. I don't want to take up the meeting's time. And my third comment, going again in reverse order, is when you were speaking originally, you talked about changing the requirement from 50% to 75%. I wish you would use clearer language. At first, I thought you were saying that 50% of the property had to be wetlands or upland open space. But you mean changing the requirement for the proportion that has to be open space from 50% to 75%. And that's a very, I wouldn't want the meeting to get confused about whether you meant 50% of the land or 50% of the land dedicated to open space. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for that feedback. We have another question in the room?
Dee Ortner, 169 Thoreau Street. I'm wondering about the impact to the number of houses that can be built. I know that you haven't specified a specific area, but have you investigated how much open space is available right now in town, and the property sizes, and then what kind of impact it might have in terms of the number of affordable housing units we'd be able to construct?
Okay, so the answer to that would depend on the very specific parcel that is being developed, and whether or not they had any wetlands on it. If it had no wetlands, this wouldn't have any impact. And if it had, if there were wetlands, there would just be a smaller portion that would not be eligible for the open space requirement.
Mr. Johnson?
Matt Johnson, 21 Witherby Street, speaking for myself, member of the select board. Anyway, I guess I'm back as usual, asking for specific case examples. I mean, you gave a theoretical example, but, you know, here in Concord, we have a number of recent PRD applications. You know, we had, I think, only one recently that actually ended up getting built. The others, the developers shifted to a subdivision model, you know, which wouldn't have these requirements.
Right.
It's always a struggle with PRDs to encourage developers to follow this. And, you know, it's a special permit process anyway, so we have discretion over whether they're approved. So, I mean, can you describe whether the, for example, the mill run PRD would have been constructed if this bylaw were in effect?
I'm sure that it would have been constructed. Whether or not it would have impacted the current design, I can't say specifically. I think this is looking more future-looking, because we, it's pretty clear that the PRDs that are coming in now are more and more dense. If we look at the ones that were built some time ago, there, there was considerably more open space in their designs, or undeveloped land in their designs.
Total open space required. You're just changing the proportion that needs to be upland, right?
Correct, correct.
Okay. Again, just, you know, rather than theoretical examples, it's always helpful, I think, if you could give concrete examples.
Linda?
Question, a similar question, and that is, have you looked at any PRD regulations from other towns to ascertain if any of them have a more stringent requirement with regard to the use of wetlands?
I did investigate some of the towns, and I did not see anything more constringent. But it also became clear in that investigation, it's very difficult to compare an attribute side by side, because there are many factors that influence the design of a PRD, and it would not just be the open space, and if they allow for wetlands to be part of the open space.
Okay, thank you.
We've got one online. Mr. Feely, I see your hand raised. If you'd like to unmute and ask your question, please.
Yes. My concern is similar to Matt Johnson's, that developers are paying for upland, and that will either potentially raise the price or cause them to go to, as a right, single-family homes, where we won't have any leverage for affordable housing. So I hate to create more work for the town planning department, but could somebody look at the, say, the last five or 10 PRDs and see how many fewer units we would have gotten with this requirement?
Thank you, Mr. Feely, for that comment. I don't want to sign up Elizabeth Hughes for any homework. But I actually also had a very similar thought. And my question would be, I would like to see how, if, some examples of how this might impact, or it would have played out on recent PRDs. I would be almost certain, on Matt's example of Mill Run, that at least 50, well, that 50% of that is in the upland, and probably not a square foot more. So Elizabeth, would that be something possible, that we'd be able to get some of that historical data for the petitioner?
The petitioner can come in and review the files and find that information. I'm fairly certain that no Mill Run would not be, have been built in its current configuration.
Just having a sense of how that would have impacted recent projects as examples. And Elizabeth, am I remembering right, and I should remember this, but when we changed, didn't we just recently slightly modify the amount in the PRD bylaw?
Yes. It was two years ago, the PRD bylaw was amended to increase the required amount of common open space from 25% to 35%, as well as define better the affordable housing requirements, and to include sustainability requirements.
Right. And as I recall, at that time, there was a lot of discussion about what that sort of magic number is, where if you go, if you have too much set aside, developers decide it's not worth the effort to use the PRD planning process. Instead, they do a subdivision, you get a traditional neighborhood. And we went back and forth on what that number would be quite a bit, and ended up, I think, as you reminded me, at 35%. And I guess my concern would be that this, this change effectively increases that quite a bit for many parcels in town, since there's so much wetland in Concord.
Correct. The discussion when that PRD amendment was put forth was actually trying to strike that balance between open space, affordable housing, and the new sustainability requirements.
Right.
To a point where you, it's very challenging to get all of those to come together in a positive direction, along with trying to evaluate existing site conditions and other factors, whether it's sewer or private septic system. If all of them work together, you get projects like Riverwalk or Mill Run. If one or the other starts to affect that balance, that's when a developer will contemplate just going to the byright subdivision.
Thank you. Okay. Any other feedback on the presentation or questions about it? With that, then, we've gone, gotten through all our presentations tonight. I thank everybody for attending. And with that, Elizabeth, unless you advise that there's other things I need to do, I would close the public hearing.
I believe the only other item was for the chairman to question the board members about your next meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Be virtual or in person, but effectively, the public hearing for annual town meeting would be closed.
Yes, thank you. So the public hearing's closed. And that was, now... No, we're not deliberating. But except for on one small, meeting in person, hybrid or remotely for our next meeting.
It's March 22nd, right?
March 22nd.
Is that right?
Sounds right. And I would be certainly in favor of having in person as an option, now that we can see each other.
I am, for in person.
We've got, we've got two board members that are online. Would you guys want to continue to have the hybrid option? Andrew or...
Oh, you're deciding between in-person or hybrid, not in-person or virtual?
Yeah. Andrew?
I'm fine, either way. I would, yeah.
I kind of think, one of the nice things about hybrid is it allows people who might be out of state to participate in it for quorum purposes. But it would, I also want to try to encourage people to be present, so. How about we start with hybrid next time, since we did have a couple people that didn't come in tonight? Hybrid, and we go from there. All right.
I believe the town, with all of the modifications, is going to continue to offer hybrid for public participation.
Awesome.
And it would be board members, whether they wish to meet as a board in person or not.
Okay, that's great.
Clarify that. The public will be able to still participate.
Great, thanks. All right, we're done. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks.
Thank you, especially Kristen and Linda for your presentation.